I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in reciting the passage of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the free flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of America, with which we stand. One nation, one liberty, the free and equal Constitution, and that is free and just as well.
Councilmember Dave?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Present.
Councilmember?
Here.
Gray?
Present.
Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember Tracis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty?
Fall move, Councilwoman Gray.
Second.
I hear a second from Councilwoman Dave. Fallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the March tenth, twenty twenty Journal is approved. Have no vote openings this evening, so we will move to communication.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, sixth district.
Receive file, the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Still ordered.
Thank you. Moving on to zoning matters. Item number one, fifth district.
Receive file, same specifications and detailed estimate of cost to the county, and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bid as recommended.
Second.
I hear a second from Councilwoman Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, all district.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to communication. Item number one, second district.
Receive and file, same motion for item number two.
Item number three, third and seventh district.
Receive and file.
Still ordered.
Thank you. Item number four? Fourth district.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to declare the appropriate legislation.
Still ordered.
Item number five, sixth district.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to the county council.
Still ordered.
Item number six, seventh district.
Receive file, and refer to the county council, the Department of Planning, the Department of Transportation, and the Public Works, and the Department of Revenue, the Board of Elections, and the legislature's office.
Still ordered.
Item number seven.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number eight, and that will be the order.
Item number nine?
Receive file, and remember to the county auditor, and that will be the order.
Item number ten.
Receive and file, same motion for item number fourteen, and that will be the order.
Item number fifteen.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number seventeen, and that will be the order.
Item number eighteen? Second district.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Still ordered.
Item number nineteen.
Receive file, and the issue is that a request for proposal be approved as requested.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Second from Councilwoman Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twenty?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number twenty-two, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-three, first district.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Normandy.
Still ordered.
Item number twenty-four?
Receive file, the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number twenty-five.
Still ordered.
Item number twenty-six, all district.
Receive file, contract in amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents be approved and awarded to Excalibur Services LLC, the lowest response of bidder as recommended. The appropriation transfers and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Councilwoman Gray, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twenty-seven, fifth and sixth district.
Receive and file, contract in amount not to exceed seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-three... I'm sorry. Seven hundred and thirty-one, a hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents be approved and awarded to Excalibur Contracting and Separated, the lowest response of bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twenty-eight?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-nine?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Madam Chair, we have one add-on this evening, under item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Report of the county executive, Dr. Page.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. The COVID-19 pandemic was only recently passed here. It has already taken a significant toll on the people in this town. Over ninety-seven people have tested positive. The last time we had our first set from the virus. Two weeks ago was the last time y'all gathered together for a meeting. That night, I assured all of you to respond, to be professional and responsible. Tonight, I can report to you that the county's activities have been just that. They have been responsible and professional. The county's public health department has worked closely with our health systems in our region, and with other healthcare experts, to correct the right measures that our community needed to limit the spread. We started with crowd-side nutrition, and we moved social nutrition on bars and restaurants. When it was time issues with stay-at-home orders, we did so with lessons learned from other cities across the country. And we cracked a policy that works. Because we knew the public would have a lot of questions, we put out a lot of information in various disciplines. Four-page executive order, a twelve-page health order, and eleven cases of information and frequently asked questions. It was posted immediately on the HCLcorona.com website. In addition to health issues, the economic consequences of the coronavirus is a cruelly severe day. Workers and residents are already struggling because of the virus and because of the public health measures that were necessary to limit the spread. Many workers will lose their jobs, and some businesses will close. Our entire economy may be remade on our ass. Financial devastation will first scare our residents, and it will then hit their governance. But earlier today, I shared with you some of my concerns about the impact that we anticipate in the coming months. Because of these causes, we expect a significant reduction in revenue, and a significant increase in emergency expenditure. This crisis evolves quickly, and we will need to work together to address the financial challenges we face. One important step myself last week was to direct all of our departments to stop defending unless it is critical, the COVID-19 pandemic, or it is otherwise necessary to protect our community. The ultimate outcome of this crisis makes us know. But what we do know is that we need a massive investment of public health system in our country. And at multiple times, it is already struggling, and was actually pushed to a clinic today. Before I close tonight, I have a three-word request for everyone listening. First, if you don't seem to be outside, stay at home. Stay at home to protect yourself and to protect others. Second, say a prayer for all of those who put their health in the danger to protect us. Our police officers, our emergency medical service officers, firefighters, doctors and nurses, grocery store workers. These are the people who work to protect us and keep us safe. They deserve our support. And finally, as long as you're six feet away from the person next to you, take a deep breath. The anxiety is understandable. Just don't let it overwhelm you. We will overcome these challenges when we work together, push each other, and look for help in each other's health and wellbeing. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
As we begin our public forum tonight, I have a few remarks I would like to make. First of all, it is a priority that we continue operating a participatory governmental process amidst this current public health crisis. I have worked with my council colleagues on the council, and in our county council's office, to ensure that we continue promoting transparency in our processes and make ourselves available to the public feedback. As we move on to public forums tonight, I want to go over the new procedure for how to submit your comments electronically. This information is also available on the homepage of the St. Louis County Council of the county council's website, which you can access from stlouisco.com. Only comments sent to councilcomments@stlouisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour before the meeting is set to start, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain your name and physical address. The email must be four hundred words or less. This is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, the same allotment allowed to a person during a normal meeting. The administrative director and/or a dozen of me will read your comment out loud during the meeting in order to be recorded in the journal. Bear in mind that when submitting these comments electronically, you are expected to uphold the same standard of decorum that we anticipate and expect during a regular in-person meeting. Here again, to everyone that has played a part in setting up this mechanism to allow to this public forum, you proceed. With that, Madam Chair, please read the comments.
Again, these comments are from Danielle Wallace, 1216 Bellevue, Richmond Heights, Missouri, six three one one seven. Thank you to the council for your work during this challenging time. However, I am concerned that a stay-at-home order does not go nearly far enough to prevent the spread of the virus and to save the lives of the residents. Community services are exempted from the order and do not meet a reasonable person's definition of what essential services are. By exempting these functionally non-essential services, workers are placed in an untenable position of having to opt out of work if they feel the conditions are too dangerous, or simply feel that it is ethically wrong to be interacting with workers during this time, which is effectively the guidance public health officials are giving. But by individually opting out, workers both sacrifice agents of ultimate risk rendered ineligible for wage benefits like unemployment support. It's fits the workers' need for compensation economically uncertain time against the desire to do the right thing for the community's health by staying home. Similarly, these weak stay-at-home measures encourage company owners to continue working their own business in order both to gain economic advantage and to provide their employees despite the fact that doing so is not in the public interest. The way this stay-at-home order is designed does a disservice to our community, places employees and businesses in an untenable position. For example, construction is included as an essential service according to the stay-at-home order. While some construction is essential to public infrastructure or personal safety, e.g. a damaged bridge or a gas leak at home, other types of construction like remodeling projects are far from essential. I strongly encourage the county to do the right thing and narrow the scope of what defines essential services. I have advocated for the county to adopt the terms that New York, Pennsylvania, and Nevada have adopted, permitting only life-sustaining services to continue and to thoughtfully narrow the specific guidelines of which services should be acted during this critical moment. Thank you, Daniel Harris from Richmond Heights. Comments received from Kimberly Wallace, Green Sunset Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one four one. Custom home builders, lawyers, landscapers, on the first day of the St. Louis City-City stay-at-home order, these industries are still open for business. Stay-at-home won't work unless people actually stay at home. Unfortunately, many companies are remaining open, forcing their employees to come to work or lose pay. And employees who choose to stay home when their companies are still operating, for their own and other's safety, risk becoming ineligible for unemployment benefits. To make this work, our leaders must stand up and say, "Only life-sustaining services can continue. Everything else must close." It will take political will without clear forceful measures to put ourselves in the path of the pandemic. Again, that's from Kimberly Wallace. Comments from Nathan Garrett, 1216 Bellevue, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one one seven. I'm concerned that many exemptions for the stay-at-home order at present won't. Undercut the recommendations of public health officials by broadening our expectations of essential to the point of absurdity, and two, put workers in the impossible position of having to either accept employers' insufficient safety measures, work quit, and give up any right to unemployment. Employers at this moment may feel routine financial pressures more keenly than the fear of an illness that is just beginning in our community. Just like their workers, it may be an order that effectively relieves them of the deeply ingrained imperative to keep their business running. Without a shutdown order, many will continue to take tough measures and downplay or ignore the risks. Please get ready to be at this time and reissue the stay-at-home order with fewer and more reasonable exceptions. Nathan Garrett, Richmond Heights. Public comment from Maria Shapal, 7133 Dartmouth, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one three zero. The county executive page. Why did a tech appointment from St. Louis City for you, she wanted to call from a black elected one in St. Louis County? City voters will not be voting on you in August. Why were you keeping North County testing sites for black people a secret until the second black COVID-19 victim died? What's going on? Did your advocacy for the black community start as a tweet, or did it start after the second black? We, the black St. Louis County officials, did not see a working plan to address North County residents prior to Monday. Why? As of yesterday, you announced AHS would organize efforts to reach the under-resourced. When will St. Louis County state-elected officials be brought into the communication stream? You need to start calling the city for county's group. As an expert on environmental racism in St. Louis County, I ask you for your administration's plan to address the needs of those living in the cancer and autoimmune condition of St. Louis County during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. When should we expect it? Maria Shapal Medel, University City, Missouri. Comments from Tom Sullivan, 751 Currie Avenue, University City, Missouri, six three one three zero. Madam Chair and members of the council, I have a few things to mention. At the March tenth council meeting, county executive page presented a platform nation to the League of Women Voters of Metro St. Louis in honor of Women's History Month. Several years back, the League took part in a thoroughly dishonest campaign by the Metropolitan Sewer District to change its charter. A League member was even the spokesperson for all the deception. I have not trusted that group since. They do not deserve any honors. Also, at the March tenth, the resolution was passed honoring the contributions that Vietnamese-Americans have made to the St. Louis area. What is also needed is a resolution condemning the proposed Olive I-70 Costco development in University City. It would cause the most diverse group of restaurants in the area to be kicked out of the city, including Vietnamese restaurants. Some of the restaurants are owned by immigrant families who would likely go out of there. The development would cause the destruction of nearly seventy well-kept homes in African-American neighborhoods, fifty-eight apartment use, dozens of diverse businesses, two churches, and one school. Ultimate way from million Costco development to taxpayers providing a $7 million subsidy. It is the worst thing University City has ever attempted in its over one-hundred-year history. It is surprising that the social justice people have been so quiet on the development proposal, which has been Councilwoman Dave's district. The current situation with the coronavirus has caused quite a disruption for public transit agencies in the country. That includes the Metro Transit Agency in this area. This rating has put five major transit operators on a negative watch. Metro is not included, but the agency has seen a big decline in ridership, and sales tax revenue is taking quite a hit. This is something the county government needs to keep a watch on. As I've been saying for years, the council needs to have a full-time monitor or auditor of Metro's operations. You approve about $165 million from Transit Agency every year, but little idea if it is meeting the needs of the dependent on public transit. Thank you for listening to my comments, Tom Sullivan. Neela Obashan, 9121, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one two three. Dear councilmembers, protecting our natural constitutional rights for emergency is imperative as the community discusses and navigates how to move forward in the future. As Benjamin Franklin famously said, "Those who would give up liberty to purchase a little safety does neither liberty nor safety." Transparency in government, involvement by the people, and thorough reporting remain imperative so the community can be assured that we are making informed and rational decisions. In addition to being updated with the number of positive COVID-19 tests in the St. Louis area, we would like to know the actual number of hospital beds being utilized if we've detected positive, and how many are on respirators. Providing these statistics will help us better understand our community's resources and how they are presently being utilized within the scope of what actions are being anticipated for the coming weeks. Sincerely, Neela Obashan, F. Missouri. Comments received from Aaron Kelbuck, 129 Elbeck Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one two seven. Thank you to the county executives, county staff, and all the associates in the council for all you are doing. Keep our community safe. You are much appreciated. Those are all the comments. Madam Chair.
The county county department forum, proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executives to execute contracts with municipal information systems for the provision of technical assistance services related to the United States Housing and Property Service and the stimulation of care, FYAT, planning grant administered by the Department of Public Services. Bill number eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance permitting ordinance number twenty-seven, thousand six hundred and eighty, by receiving immunity access, Act one oh two, pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Social Services for support of the Capeside Wyoming Shelter. Bill number eighty-three, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executives to extract a grant of $30,085.95 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the Capeside Wyoming Shelter and Services for women who are victims of violent crimes. An authority for the county executives to execute necessary documents. Bill number eighty-four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executives to extract a grant of $261,028.28 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the Public Safety Department for domestic violence charges, and authorizing the county executives to execute necessary documents. Bill number eighty-five, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray. Amending title for the St. Louis Department of Defense to 1974 amendment, Capexon, by enhancing and adding one provision to Schedule Four. Bill number eighty-six, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray. An ordinance approving a petition for a C-8 plant commercial district and a F-18 blood plant commercial district for attractive land in the C-8 plant commercial district and the F-18 blood plant commercial district. Subject of the petition, and repealing ordinance number seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one, TC01-20 Fund for LLC. Bill number eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance appropriating and setting apart a sum of $1 million from the unappropriated balance of the Health Fund for support of costs of personnel, time, supplies, materials, operating costs for the Palapagos T-11 United Way Call Center, and access to custody for uninsured, all associated with the county's effort to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic in St. Louis County. Bill number eighty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance transferring the sum of $7 million from the unappropriated balance of the General Fund to the county's general administration fund and support team provided for in the settlement agreement for the matter of lung fever versus death in St. Louis County. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Please proceed with perfection.
Bill number twenty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number twenty is held.
Bill number five, introduced by Councilmember Fish, Tracis, and Harder.
Please hold on the order of business.
Number five is held.
Moving on to perfection of bills, bill number thirty-two, introduced by Councilmember Tracis.
Please hold bill number thirty-two.
Bill number thirty-two is held.
Bill number thirty-six, introduced by Councilmember Fish.
Hold on the order of business.
Bill number thirty-six is held.
Bill number seventy-four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number seventy-four. Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number seventy-four is perfected.
Bill number seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number seventy-five.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number seventy-five is perfected.
Bill number seventy-six, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold on the order of business. Bill number seventy-six is held.
Bill number seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number seventy-seven.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number seventy-seven is perfected.
Bill number seventy-eight, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number seventy-eight. Second? All in favor? If I heard a second from Councilwoman Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number seventy-eight is perfected. Moving on to the final passage.
Bill number three twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number three twenty. Bill number three twenty is held.
Substitute bill number two for bill number thirty-five, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Please hold on the order of business. Substitute bill number two for bill number three, the fact is held on the order of business.
Bill number thirteen, introduced by Councilmembers Tracis, Page, Dunaway, Fish, Walton, Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold bill number fourteen, Jim.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Bill number sixty-five, introduced by Councilmember Dave.
I move to the final passage of bill number sixty-five. Second? Second from Councilwoman Dunaway. Roll call.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Here on bill number sixty-five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-five is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-six, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of bill number sixty-five. Second? Second from Councilwoman Dave. Roll call.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Next on bill number sixty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-six is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-seven introduced by Councilmember Fish.
I move for final passage of bill number sixty-seven.
Second? Second from Councilman Harder. Roll call.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number sixty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-eight introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number sixty-eight.
Second, Councilwoman Gray?
Roll call.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number sixty-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-nine introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of bill number sixty-nine. Second? Second from Councilwoman Davis. Roll call.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill sixty nothing, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number seventy introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number seventy.
Second, Councilwoman Gray?
Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number seventy, there are seven ayes.
Bill number seventy is finally passed.
Bill number seventy-one introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray and Tracis.
I move for final passage of bill number seventy-one.
Second? Roll call.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number seventy-one, roll call.
Bill number seventy-one is finally passed.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, Councilman Harder.
I was wondering if we could hold this until we get a better handle on the propede sales tax revenue going forward with this crisis. I would, I think we should hold this at least another week or two until we get a handle on sales tax revenue to come for these, these bills.
Are you referring to the next item on our agenda, Councilman Harder, bill seventy-two?
Seventy-two and seventy-three.
Okay. Okay, we kind of had just a little bit, although we are there right now. Can you read that item?
Yes, yes.
That's the part.
Bill number seventy-two introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, I do agree with Councilman Harder, we are going to hold this for a week.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I add a little push?
Councilman Tracis?
Um, I don't disagree with this action, but I do think we need to reach a thick end for coming. I'm not sure a week or two or four is going to give up enough information on rough technical speaking to make any more learned decision than we would tonight. Um, perhaps in two months, but I don't know that in two, three, or four weeks we're going to have any more accurate information regarding sales tax revenue, unexpected costs, what have you, so, um, I just want the public to be aware that, um, this may help again. Thank you. And Councilman, House Chair?
Councilman Davis?
The only thing I'd like to add on that is let's keep in mind in both of these bills, these are the individuals working this crisis. They're the ones that are out there working extra shifts, getting their personal health at risk. So I would, you know, this has been held now and had, um, in the works for over a year. And I think that at some point we need, um, to bring it forward and recognize all the work that these men and women are doing out there, uh, each and every day, especially during this crisis. That's all I have to say. Madam Chair?
Councilman Tracis?
Thank you. Um, I agree with Councilman Fish, I believe that's why I made the point I did about, um, holding it. Just so you know that we're in a different place for weeks from now. I respect your decision and I just, uh, hope that we buy for that as we go forward. Madam Chairwoman?
Councilman Harder?
Yes, I agree with my colleagues on this. I, I think we also need to look at the cost of this going forward. I'm all in favor of these raises, uh, but we have to look at this project and other projects that we have some control over when the rest of the world is out of control. So I just want to maybe have to go week to week on this, um, as Councilman Tracis said, uh, to find out where we stand and, uh, with the sales tax. So, um, that's my only concern. I want these people to get the raises, but it's unfortunate that we're in the times we're in right now. But I think we can hold this for a little while at least. Thank you.
Thank you. All of, all of these points are well taken. Um, I will hold it for a week. I think that is the first approach right now given this crisis we have found ourselves in, um, since the last time we took up this issue and voted it for final approval or for initial approval two weeks ago. Um, and I know I will be doing some homework over the next week, talking to our budget director and others, um, to give as much information as possible about some of the impacts that we know of at this time. Um, I don't think anyone wants to kick this down the road, but I think also there are people, um, many of us, maybe all of us actually, who also understand the need to make sure that resources we find in this crisis are what we're needing most right now. Um, which is partially why we did have some items on our agenda tonight related to sending emergency fund money to our police department for personal protective equipment, which we will vote on in the resolution. So with that, bill number seventy-three is held. Resolution.
Madam Chair, with resolution, if they may, just- Resolution number one introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the action of resolution number one.
Second? Please call it off.
Councilmember-
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway? Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember-
Aye.
Councilmember-
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Uh, please read regulation number two.
Resolution introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Whereas the county executive has recommended a transfer of funds from the emergency fund to the police department for support of costs of vital personal protective equipment during the current state of emergency related to COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas the recommendation of the county executive is based upon the need to protect the health and safety of St. Louis County Police Department in order to allow them to safely and effectively fulfill the mission of the department as well as to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen virus. Now, the court see it resolved by the county council of St. Louis, Missouri, as follows. The amount of funds allocated to the hereby transfer from the emergency fund to the police department for support of the purchase of personal protective equipment by the police department during the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
I move for adoption of resolution number two.
Second?
Um, I heard a second from Councilman Tracis. Please call the roll call.
Councilmember Dave?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fish?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Moving on to unattended business. Item number one.
Um, the reappointments will be held on the order of business, same motion through item number three, and that will be the order.
Madam, I, I believe that you, you said there were the reappointments. There are several appointments on-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, the reappointments be held on the order of business, that will be the order for item number one.
Thank you. Item number two?
The appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three?
The appointments and reappointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four, third gift card.
Please hold on the order of business.
Item number five?
The new relationship license be approved after passed it.
Second?
Second from Councilwoman Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, second question.
Uh, the new relationship license be approved after passed it. Second? Second from Councilwoman Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven?
Um, the appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number eight?
The appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number nine?
The appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Madam Chair, we're moved on to new business. Of the new business, we have two prepared-
Appointments, uh, issues. Uh, I was, um, discussing like- I'm going for the adoption of order number one and order number two.
Madam Chair, can we read the orders quickly?
Yes, please read the orders.
Order number one? This is an error communication from Jennifer Kitty, acting director for SCADA, Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of this property. Item number two? In the matter of the request of the record's makes and for permission to destroy certain books, papers, or certificates of various county department offices. I believe Councilwoman Gray made the motion to adopt these with their second.
Their second?
Our second.
Second from Councilman Tracis? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
Madam, I think that was two. I think that was prepared order one and two. One and two.
I'm sorry. Motion carry, motion carrying orders number one and two are adopted. Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. I want to thank everyone for bearing, uh, for inpatient with us as we worked through this very first and historic virtual meeting of the St. Louis County Council. We are aware that there are some technical difficulties that we will be sorting through, um, closely related to the sound quality. And so we will be working with our IT team over the next week, um, to ensure that there are improvements in time for next Tuesday's meeting, which will be a one P M. meeting, um, as we do often about one time a month. Um, are there any further comments from the rest of the council?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a comment for you.
Yes, I'm over this.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, this is, as we know, a new era in our communication with our, as our citizens. And I want to thank them for being patient and considerate, uh, during this unprecedented challenge that we face. Uh, the information is being disseminated fast and sometimes it is inaccurate. I would like to urge the administration to keep the legislative draft of St. Louis County government informed as soon as any one can keep this available to help us to keep our constituents calm and, and involved in making good decisions during this time. So that's my only comment. I just appreciate the, uh, involvement of everyone at the table getting information at the same time. Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Councilman Tracis?
Yes, thank you. Um, I want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank the incredibly diligent and hard work on the side of, um, the I T. department to make this happen tonight in a relatively seamless fashion, as well as the administrator and her team, Mrs. Valenti and, and her, um, her team, Chris Howard, all spent untold hours that people don't know about, making sure that this came off tonight. And as I said, in a pretty unseamless way, so I just want to thank them publicly and acknowledge their hard work. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Diane.
My pleasure.
Chuck, everyone on the, the team, I T. and council staff will help us with this. It has been a momentous feat. Thank you. Councilman Gray?
Yes, I would like to echo my previous two colleagues. I wanted to, um, mention that North County, um, did have a fight that was in the works about a week ago. Um, my office received a call from the administrator of Christian Hospital that left a voicemail. I think I took it over there, but, uh, the, the, um, I think I, it took a while for him or whomever at the, uh, hospital to get it, um, together. So I don't know what, why it took so long. I do know that it was just, so, uh, a little over a week ago. It, it was, it's only taking time to come to fruition. Um, again, I, uh, as well, uh, I too would like to get, um, information from the administration ahead of time or as soon as possible, uh, before it hits the public if possible, because, uh, I guess people start to, it's sometimes it's so happens.
Right.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Councilman Harder? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We all received an email, multiple emails this week from the, uh, economic development partnership. And I just wanted to remind everyone here and our residents that help is on the way for economic uh, help of the small business, uh, community. And they are leading the charge to try to put together monetary packages to help the small businesses. And, uh, you all got emails today about this. Uh, they set up some call-in numbers where small business can call in and, uh, get information on how to get some of these, uh, federal funds that will strictly trickle in our direction in the weeks and months to come. So, uh, they are trying to do what they can, uh, to get that out there, but if they, uh, if you want to give them any input, I'm sure they'll take it on how to get, uh, money to people as quick as possible. So, uh, just stay tuned and, uh, we hope to hear more about this.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, reforming adjourn? I could?
Yes, Councilman Trakis?
Thank you. I apologize for belaboring this, but I do think it's important. I understand the frustration of my colleagues in terms of my time in receiving certain information from the administration. That said, I want all of you to try to comprehend the sheer value of information and data that the administration and the council office is dealing with hours, not just the incredible amount of hours that they have put in. So we need to have a little bit of flexibility and understanding, I think, with respect to the sheer weight of the burden that they're carrying up there on the night floor. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that it's not about not wanting to give us the information, it's about having the time to deal with this thing in an effective way. I think the administration is coming out and will try.
Thank you, Councilman Trakis. Any further?
I'd like to, yeah. I would not, uh, but then I think they are doing a fantastic job. I was just saying that right before it goes out, just get a little note, that we need to know exactly what's going on, but if we could just get a, uh, press conference will be held in five minutes, that's enough for me. It's possible, I mean, I think they're doing a great job though. That's all I'm saying. I just, a couple of things were out and I had, so even if I get it afterwards, at least I know something went out ten minutes ago. I just missed that email.
Madam Chairwoman?
All in favor?
Yes, thank you, and I do appreciate all of that, and I do appreciate the fact that they're working extremely hard on this. It is, uh, probably some need though, however, I get the information from my constituents that they have that information, which I do. That's my only purpose of saying that I'm not trying to diminish their job, whatever it is that they're doing, I appreciate that. But I just want to make sure that I'm able to project information to my constituents before they get it into a meeting. So that's my purpose. Thank you.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Trakis? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.